I'd like to call the Winton Woods School Board of Education meeting to order for Monday, December 15, 2014. If you would please stand with me so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you would please to put your cellphones either on mute, or vibrate, or silent, or something. Thank you.
Including the board.
Including the board. Ms. Connor, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Penicuff?
Here.
Mr. Cleary?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Miranda?
Here.
And Mrs. Burns?
Here.
District honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions.
Okay, Madam President and Board, even though some of the students may not be here, since this is televised, I still would like to read about some of their accomplishments, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right, okay. So, is Brianna here? That's what I thought, okay. So, the first award goes to Brianna Cardenas. And this is a special award from the Kwanis, which is Character is Key, and her accomplishment is caring. So, this is what Jeremy Day, the principal of the intermediate school, writes about Brianna. Brianna is a very caring young lady who always has wanted to participate in class and follow all teacher and school expectations, all. She also has been a great help to students new to the building, showing them the ropes and how things run at the intermediate school, and that's what Mr. Day thinks about Brianna. So, when you guys were in school, who followed all of the rules?
Hmm.
Okay, all right, so Brianna is totally an exceptional young lady.
And may I share, please? Because of that, Brianna has been awarded the Kwanis Character is Key Award in special recognition of your outstanding character trait of caring. Within the character of an individual lies the welfare of the nation. It is the character that enables the individual to survive, to endure, and to transcend the negative. Your values reflect your commitment to be a student of good character to your peers, your teachers, your parents, and your community. And she was awarded a $35 gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Noble. So, thank you.
I get a chance to deliver it to her personally?
The award is from the Green Hills Forest Park Kwanis Club.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lawrence. Ready for the next one?
Yes.
This next award is Student of the Month. Sierra? I knew that was you. I was hoping it was you. All right. So, this is what Ms. Linda Lumpkin writes about Sierra. Sierra, while we're reading about you, I need you to stand up and just be proud. With enthusiasm, I'll write this letter of recommendation for Sierra. Sierra, it's a genuine pleasure to be around. Her kind personality contributes to her relationships with student staff in our building. She possesses many characteristics which will ensure her success in college and in life, but the most notable ones are her ability to preserve, persevere in difficult situations, and upcoming love for family and friends and a strong work ethic. Sierra is an excellent student who is involved in many extracurricular activities. She values giving back to her school and her community. Currently, she is the treasure for the jobs for Cincinnati graduates here at Winton Woods High School. She is also the captain of the cheerleading squad where she utilizes her leadership abilities training junior varsity cheerleaders. Sierra is also a proud employee of the Cottingham Retirement Community Nursing Home where she serves at many times, performs, and performs for the elderly. Sierra really enjoys her job. She states that she loves the people there. If it was not for them, I would not be there. It's a great building to be, it's a great to build relationships with them. This statement is a key element of Sierra. She thrives on building positive relationships with others. Sierra has applied to Kent State, University of Akron, and the Ohio State University. She has already been accepted to the University of Akron School of Business. Sierra plans to become a general manager and/or a buyer for a high-end retail store like Saks. Very good. Growing up, Sierra mentored with her grandmother Stacy and her mother Sharice. Stacy works as a general manager for American Eagle in Seattle, and her mother Sharice was employed as a store manager for Old Navy for 13 years. Wow, your mom?
Mm-hmm.
13 years. Way to go.
I'm still in the Republic.
All right. Their influence has guided her into retail. She plans to complete a business degree and a minor in fashion merchandising. I've only had the opportunity to work with Sierra as her counselor for three months. However, in this short period of time, I've noticed her determination to succeed. Sierra's excellent leadership and interpersonal skills, which will definitely prove to be an asset in the business world. She is reliable, organized, well-rounded, and has a positive attitude. I am convinced that Sierra will continue the academic, personal, and professional success she has demonstrated as a high school student. She will be a valuable asset to any school, profession, and to our community. Therefore, I highly recommend her for the Student of the Month.
Sierra, on behalf of the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education and the Green Hills Forest Park Kwanis, we want to present you with this certificate as well as a $25 gift card to Gold Star. Pictures.
Hold it. Ah, you know you couldn't. So, tell us about all your drive, and all your ambition, and your motivation, and all that stuff.
Um, I don't know where to start. I don't know. Well, growing up, I have two brothers that are like, they have, they're very athletic, and I'm not athletic for them. So, I know I had to do good in school so I can go to school. And, I don't know, I wanted to be successful. I wanted to be known, because, you know, they were known for their athletics, and I'm not really good at that stuff, so. I, what, no, I'm not. I'm not, I'm really good at academics. I don't know. I like to be the best in my class.
Good for you. Good for you.
Congratulations.
As you guys can see, if I'm, if I was standing, I'm about 6'5", so. I was actually good at athletic, no, I was good at academics. And guess what? Those brothers might be working for you. Fantastic. Mom, Dad, you guys want to say anything?
I just want to say I'm proud of her despite everything that we went. We just had a house fire a few months ago. We lost everything. So, despite everything, she's still has drive.
Fantastic.
And done good in school.
Way to go.
And I'm proud of her.
Way to go.
Really proud of her. I'm really proud of all my children. So, thank you for honoring her. She really deserves it.
It was our honor to honor her. So, thank you.
Yes.
Another applause.
Mr. Smith, sometimes this is the best seat in the house, because as you read these, we get to see the face of family and friends and parents. And when you, when you read a parent or parents are nodding, yeah, that really is my child. That's a, that's a good description. That's, that's a blessing to, for us to see how successful you are as parents and how you've, how hard you've worked, because this was the result. She's the result. Your sons are the result. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And don't start those guys out at minimum wage either. I'm speaking for the guys, you know? Let's have some love in the room, right? Okay. Mr. Wright-Gwin, come on up, sir. A little bit about this award. This award is presented to an organization or an individual to recognize their significant contribution to the Winton Woods City School District over a period of many years. A little bit about Mr. Gwin. He is an environmental awareness program manager for the city of Forest Park, has been a longtime supporter of Winton Woods City Schools. In partnership with the Forest Park Walmart, Mr. Gwin was the driving force behind the creation of the Land Lab at Winton Woods Elementary School. This area has a rain garden, planting beds, and composting bins, and was described by Mr. Gwin as a hands-on discovery facility. For many years, Mr. Gwin has also partnered with Winton Woods Intermediate School to sponsor the Environmental High IQ Bowl for fifth and sixth graders. This activity, this activity tested students' knowledge of environmental issues in a competition that was aired on Waycross Media. The Environmental Bowl was replaced in 2012 by the Echo Warrior Club at the intermediate school. Each monthly club meeting highlights lessons on subjects, excuse me, like ecosystems, biology, the rainforest, and animal adaptations. Mr. Gwin has also been able to bring the Cincinnati Zoo Animal Ambassador's Program to the school a number of times. Thank you, Mr. Wright-Gwin, for all of your great, hard, intensified work. Thank you.
On behalf of the Winton Woods City School District, I'd like to present you with this little token for Community Spirit Award dated today to Wright-Gwin, December 15, 2014.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You should hold that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is unexpected, but well-received. And I've been working with the environmental program for over, almost 25 years. And one of the joys I've had has been working with the school district. Y'all have had some great people, and you still do, I said "had," but y'all have some great people in the school district, and it's a real joy to work with them. They're, they're sharp. They have the interest of the students at heart, and we're always coming up with some new ideas. So, education is a priority in our program. It will always be a priority in our program, and I hope that we will always have the partnership that we have today. Okay, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, we're going to repeat ourselves, but now we have a face to go with the speech. Brianna, come on. You don't have to say anything yet, because I know, I know you're ready. All right, do we have other family members out here? Come on.
Find your seats.
Yes. Brianna, Mr. Day wrote something really nice about you. And so, we all, we read it, and they applauded and loved it, and now we get a chance to see you. Do you mind if I read this again?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Brianna is a very caring young lady who always has wanted to participate in class and follow all teacher and school expectations. She also has been a great help to students new to the building, showing them the ropes and how things run in the intermediate school, and Mr. Day thinks you are absolutely wonderful. Is he right?
Yes.
All right. So, you want to say something about why do you help other kids and how you make things work in the school? Anything you want to tell us? We'll listen.
I'm really new to this school, too.
You're new, and you take charge.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're probably taller than Mr. Day. I bet he'll love that one. Okay. Mom, Dad, this is your time. You want to tell us something about, something that we don't know?
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Congratulations. Another hand for you. President Burns is going to tell you about your prize.
You have something awarded to you. So, this says, Character is Key Award presented to Brianna in special recognition of your outstanding character trait of caring. Within the character of an individual lies the welfare of a nation. It is character that enables the individual to survive, to endure, and to transcend the negative. Your values reflect your commitment to be a student of good character to your peers, your teachers, your parents, and your community. And they have awarded you a $35 gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Noble, so you can go get as many books as you want to.
Fantastic.
In light of our timing, I think we'll take a five-minute recess for those of you who need to go home and study for exams that are coming up. We're well aware that they should be coming soon, so we'll recess for five minutes. All right. Seeing no public comments, we'll move to the approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes of November the 24th, regulars meeting and the work session of December the 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, no questions. Ms. Connor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penicuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
And Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Treasurer's report.
That's me. Sorry. All right. Sorry. Okay, you have the financial statements in front of you for the month ending November 30th. Page one is the bank reconciliation. It presents that the general revenue, general fund revenues are $20.6 million. Month-to-date revenues, $1.9 million for state, foundation, and tangible reimbursements. Page three and four present the general fund object and function reports. Total year-to-date expenditures, $17.1 million, and we are currently 3.3% under budget, or $1.3 million. Page five represents the year-to-date financial activity for all funds, and at this time, the district had an unencumbered balance of all funds of approximately $14.8 million, of which $13.7 million is the general fund.
Thank you.
I like the under-budget part.
Is that good? That's a goal.
That's a goal. And these are moved to audit?
I really wanted to say, could you expand on account number 5909015?
Oh, I was just.
I'm just teasing you.
Wasn't that mean? Wasn't that not the meanest thing ever?
Do you mind if I clean up after him a little bit?
Yes, please.
Thank you for stepping in tonight and taking care of us so professionally.
Yes.
And we wish our treasurer a speedy recovery.
Yes.
That's wonderful. Treasurer's recommendations, 7.0.
Sure. We'd like you to approve the investment report for November 2014, and current investment balance as of November 30th is $19.4 million. You can see that's up because we did invest in meter investments to try and generate some extra interest earnings. So, right now, our month-to-date interest for November was $2,157, ranging from .06% to .45%, and we hope that next month is better.
Do we have, have a guess, and truly it would be, of what kind of rate we're looking to get on return on the meter investments?
On the meter, yeah. When we met with meter investments, we're in this for about a three-year plan, and of course, some of those investments are going to come off in, in the first year, and the longer range is of course going to bring us more. So, we're hoping to get over 3%.
Woo-hoo. Okay.
Madam President, I move to approve the Treasurer's Investment Report as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Connor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penicuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Cleary? Oh, whoops, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. Sorry.
Hi. And she's gone, so it was okay. Excuse me for that.
That's quite all right. 7.02, resolution determining to proceed with bond issue.
Yes. Okay. It's to approve the resolution determining to proceed with the bond issue. It's, went up to 8.48, from 8.48 to 8.79 due to a 5% decrease in property values.
Any questions?
Madam President, I'll move to approve Resolution 7.02 determining to proceed with bond issue.
I'll second.
We moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Mr. Penicuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
8.01, reports to the superintendent.
Madam President, the six schools have submitted upcoming events, but I'd like for you to pay special attention to a few that I will acknowledge. Number one, in the primary north, the north notes caroling in the primary north neighborhood at 6:30 PM. I believe that's tomorrow. It should be exciting. So, if you have that special voice, I'm sure they'd love for you to be there. I will be skipping that one, for sure. All right. And then, the other special event is, it comes up later on in January, but it's the Cincinnati Zoo Ambassador Program from 1 to 2, and then there's that soccer club meeting from 3:10 to 4:00. We are also attempting to recognize all of our parent conferences so that parents know that we're expecting them to be at the conferences so we can talk about their students and their children's academic opportunities. If you're doing well, continue. If you're not, then we will give you assistance to make sure that you can. And Mr. Cleary asked me about mass ability. That's coming up in the middle school, and Mrs. Wilson says that she is an expert on talking about mass ability. So, Ms. Wilson, would you come up and tell us what that means?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mass ability is a play on words, and it means mass ability. So, it's a, just a showcase of the students' musical and creative expression, and it's at the middle school. They do it every year. I'm not sure what the theme is. After Mr. Smith asked me to look into it, I did try to reach the principal to find out what the theme is. So, you'll just have to go and find out for yourself.
Be surprised.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
But they do have mass ability, and they want you to see it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. You know, it's so funny, according to that, you explained it. I've gone to it before.
Yes, I've seen you there.
And now, I think I remember it called mass, but I thought it was a, I thought it was some kind of event, and the event was called, it was like a play called Mass Ability. It was a lot of fun, so.
All right.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Cleary wanted to know if this was going to increase the budget or something. The next event that's going to be really exciting, we had the first series, and Ms. Jordan and Mr., Mrs. Denny put on a fantastic event. So, we're on our second series for January 24th, 21st, excuse me, Your Future is Now, College and Career Ready in Seminar, Winton Woods High School Library at 6:30 PM. So, if you guys could come to that, I'm sure the children and the families would really appreciate your presence. And those are all of the, some of the key, key events that are coming up for the next semester.
Thank you. 8.02, first read for revised board policies.
Madam President and Board, these are all first reads on revised policy 1623, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, administration nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunities, policy 3122, professional staff nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunities, policy 3123, professional staff section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, policy 8210, Operation School Calendar, policy 4122, classified staff nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, and finally, 4123, classified staff section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I, I don't know if any other board members had difficulty in accessing some of these, specifically 1422, 8210, and 4122. I was unable to pull up. So, it may just be me and my computer, and we can talk offline, but.
Okay.
There was some difficulty on those three. So, it looks like it was probably just me.
We'll make sure that we take care of it.
We'll fix me. Okay. Thank you. All right, 9.01, superintendent's recommendations, personnel schedules.
Superintendent is asking the board to approve personnel schedules, resignations and retirement schedule A, support staff, schedule C, extra duty and supplemental employment, schedule D, and leave, schedule E.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, with the consent of the board, I would move that we approve schedules A, C, D, and E in one motion.
Second.
We moved in second. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Connor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Penicuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.02, memorandum between Winton Woods City School District Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees.
Madam President and Board, this is a memorandum of understanding between Winton Woods City School District Board of Education, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. The purpose of this memorandum of understanding is entered by, entered into by and between the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education and the Ohio Association of School Employees, OPEC. The board and OPEC, through their designated representatives, have arrived at this agreement to address changes to the group health plans. This memorandum of understanding modifies the 2013 Health Insurance MOU, which states in relevant part, effective January 1, 2014, the board shall offer three groups' health plans as outlined in the appendix through December 31, 2014. The PPO plan with the least participation shall be eliminated the following calendar year. The understanding, whereas the board and OPEC acknowledge that there will be no medical plan changes for the 2015 calendar year, however, the board carrier shall change from United Healthcare to Anthem. Beginning January 1, 2015, the board's group health plan shall be fully self-insured and subject to all laws and regulations applicable to self-insured plans, including but not limited to minimum-maximum out-of-pocket costs that may be assigned to employees. The board and OPEC acknowledge and agree that per federal regulations, the minimum-maximum out-of-pocket cost that may be charged for a single self-insured health plan is $2,600. The board and OPEC agree that in order to hold employees harmless, the board shall increase the board's contribution to the single HDP, Health Savings Account, from $750 annually to an increase of $100 to $850. The board and OPEC agree that all deposits to employee health savings accounts shall incur honor before the first day in January 2015. Consistent with section 13.0202 of the negotiated agreement, the $250 PPO shall be eliminated effective December 31, 2014, and employees who fail to enroll in either the $500 PPO and the HDHP by the end of the open enrollment period shall automatically be enrolled in the $500 PPO.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum between the Winton Woods City School Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing no questions? Ms. Connor?
Mr. Penicuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.03, memorandum between Winton Woods City School District Board of Education and the Winton Woods Teachers Association, local OEIA, OEIA, NEA.
Madam President, the memorandums are identical. I can read the entire Winton Woods Teachers Association memorandum if you would like for me to, but.
Not necessary if they're identical, so.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to recommend action to approve the memorandum between Winton Woods City School Board and the Winton Woods Teachers Association, OEIA and NEA as presented.
Second. Hearing no questions? Ms. Connor?
Mr. Penicuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Thank you. 9.04, 2015-16 District Calendar.
Madam President and Board, the creativity of the calendar committee has just gone like haywire. They have color-coded symbols, total school days, beginning of new quarter, holidays, stay allowable exceptions, total school hours, total staff days, all encumbered into one. total school hours, total staff days, all encumbered into one for the convenience of our families and also for our students. This is one of the most comprehensive calendars that I've ever seen because it encompasses everything. The, for the public's appetite, the state has now moved us from days to hours, and so this gives us a balance on both sides of the coin. So thank you to Mrs. Jordan and the Calendar Committee for their creativity. I know you didn't think that I did this. Not at all. Okay. So thank you very much.
I was pretty, I was amazed. I was pleasantly surprised when I opened it and saw the calendar. It was easy to understand. You knew what day everything was going on, when's the first day of the quarter, when's the last day of the quarter, everything. So kudos to those who put this together.
Anytime you ask Ms. Jordan to step up her game, this is what you get.
It's a great visualization compared to in the past. Mr. Smith, I have, I have a couple, a couple comments and maybe one question. One, I really like it because you can see trends within the report. In breaking it down into hours, just as a quick glance, our fourth quarter hours are much higher than our first and second quarter hours. Maybe next year, as we do this and we look at what actually occurred this year, maybe there's a way we can shift more hours from fourth quarter back to first quarter. I know it's occurring in professional development because you can see it. You can see the trend where we could never see it before. But it looks like it's a really great, very robust tool.
One of the other things that we want to do as we work diligently to secure one-to-one devices for all of our students, when we are on professional development, our students can still be actively engaged in instruction at home. And so when the polar vortex shows up again, as many people say that it might, we will not lose any instructional time. So that's the plan.
Nice. So is there a motion for approval on this calendar?
I move to approve the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen district calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Connor?
Mr. Penne cuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Thank you. Ten point oh, Board of Education Evaluations. Mr. Penne cuff?
Board, at your place, I provided you with a copy of the so-called A to Z checklist. This was a follow-up that you requested of me in our last work session. So this is the most current version. Your assignment, colleagues, is to score it according to your experiences and memory for two thousand fourteen and get it to me yet this month so that I have time to provide, prepare a consolidated report that I will bring for our discussion and/or approval at the organizational meeting or failing that at the regular meeting in January. But I'll, it is my intent to have it ready for the organizational meeting. So that's, that's why there is a specific cutoff date. So you have an electronic copy in your in-mail when you get back home, for those of us whose computers are working. So I sent it out about five o'clock tonight. You can send me either, either version, and I'll work from that. You'll have some difficulty with some of the questions, I predict, because some of the questions are, you may say, well, we do that some of the time, but not as much as I would like. Just answer it with your best judgment as to whether the statement is mostly true or mostly false against your expectation. So there's no, there's no right or wrong answer, so to speak. This is a open book test. It's a self-evaluation to provoke discussion and improvement in our processes for next year. So that would be that topic.
Thank you. Then we'll move to your legislative report, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The House in Columbus was to have adjourned this afternoon. I don't know that they did. The Senate adjourned for the, for the term Thursday, but not signed a die, so they could come back if the House gives them something that they need to, to work on. But the legislative, the Hundred and Thirtyth General Assembly closed today, having enacted about thirty bills related to education, none of which fixed the school funding, but all of which played around the edges with some important tasks, some important thoughts, but other was, by most people's judgment, sort of mischievous, playing around rather than some core fundamental fixes. I would call your attention to an article that was in Saturday's Inquirer, headline which really surprised me, says Religious Partner Needed For Grants. This has to do with House Bill four eighty-three, which was passed and enacted last summer, last June. And all of a sudden, there is this flurry of activity that mixes church and state. And a careful reading of the legislation would tell you, there is no mention in the legislation of what the governor is talking about here. What he's talking about are some community joint programs with schools that must include, a faith-based organization must include a business, and there is a pot of money. Further reading would tell you that the pot of money, this, this article, by the way, was written by a reporter from the Cleveland Plain Dealer. And as you get through it, you realize there's not enough money for anybody but Cleveland. So I don't know why this was in the Inquirer, to tell you the truth. So that's my take on that, in case you had a question. Madam President, that concludes the legislative report. I'll respond to questions if any.
Hearing none. We'll move to the Great Oaks Report. Mr. Cleary?
There's not a whole lot to report on, Madam President and Board. The Great Oaks Foundation, Education Foundation sponsored its annual reception last week and dinner before our regular Board meeting to thank individuals who had made significant contributions to the success of our district and its students at the Great Oaks level. Impact awards were given to all deserving business partners. A lot of, a lot of businesses were present. Four businesses were honored for their contributions to what they do for our students. Students from the Scarlet Oaks Culinary Arts Program and Hospitality Services prepared and served food at both events. The food was delicious, especially the dessert. Kind of an item of interest, the Transition Support Program at the Great Oaks is a partnership with the Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities to provide career exploration, information, and experiences to qualified students. Young people from ages fourteen to twenty-one on an IEP in any of our affiliated schools are eligible. There's twenty-one students currently participating, and we have one from here from Witten Woods that's participating. It's exciting that these services are being offered to our students that are outside the normal realm because of the age, the age issue. So it may be a student that's on an IEP, and maybe they're going to be a fifth or a sixth-year graduate, kind of. They really haven't graduated, but they still have an IEP. So they can get some additional training and career opportunities maybe that they wouldn't normally get. So it's kind of an exciting program. It's a pilot program. It's the only one like it in the state of Ohio. The last item is the Great Oaks Career Campuses received their CAFR and audit report. I know ours will probably be coming in the next month. With that, I have nothing else to report. I won't read the CAFR report. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleven point oh, Set Date For Organizational Meeting Of The Board Of Education. Board, I know that we've had some discussions about the availability of everyone, and I'd like to hear the date that was proposed.
The date that was proposed was Tuesday, January the sixth.
That's still good with me?
Still good. At six thirty, correct?
Six thirty.
So let's put a motion in the minutes.
Madam President, I recommend that we confirm the date is Tuesday, January the sixth, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty here in the boardroom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Connor, will you call her all?
Mr. Penne cuff?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Eleven point oh two, Appointment Of President Pro Tem. We will need a president to conduct the meeting for the organizational meeting in January, as my term will expire as of December thirty first at midnight. Anyone topping at the bit? No.
Is it appropriate for our treasurer to do so?
No, but, no, but I will.
I move that Viola Johnson, I nominate Viola Johnson as president pro tem for that meeting.
It's just just for the, the beginning of the organizational meeting, and then there will be nominations for both president and vice president at that point.
And actually, your work is finished as soon as the president is elected.
Yeah, you sing the gavel, the gavel, start the meeting, and
Got it.
You get five minutes of
Viola, will you do that?
Yes.
Wonderful. Let me appoint you.
I think I have to do a little call.
Okay, so it says appointment, but it doesn't, it does require a motion. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay.
So I need a second. I think. That's what Randy's got here. Maybe not.
You're taking a vote?
Yeah, I think so.
Second.
Thank you. Ready?
Yes, please.
Mr. Penne cuff?
I'll vote aye if Viola will.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
I shouldn't have to vote.
Okay. Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
And Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Had to be the funniest board ever. I'm loving it.
Twelve point oh one, Comments From Members Of The Board Of Education And Superintendent. So let's start down with Dr. Johnson. Anything to
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have some comments. My comments are basically focused around student achievement, and the Board was with me, and we had the pleasure of attending the National Honor Society induction of students on Friday, December the twelfth, with the opportunity to mingle with the students in the library afterward. And the National Honor Society, they did their whole program, and it talked about how the requirements were built around scholarship, leadership, service, and character. And it was really encouraging to talk to the students, the young men and women afterward, just to talk about what they, you know, wanted to do with their future, from educators to engineers to accountants to, you know, forensic biologists, and the list just went on and on, and it was really encouraging. And I also had an opportunity to attend a football banquet on Sunday, December the fourteenth. And I was also encouraged to hear about the wonderful athletic attributions and accomplishments of all the football players and their team. But I was even more encouraged when the head coach, Andre Parker, announced that the average GPA for the athletes was up two point eight. The average. And, you know, and they even had certificates for about ten of the players who had a GPA of three point five or higher. You know, that was for the quarter, but keep in mind, they didn't announce the students that had the two point eight up to the three point five. So I would venture to state that that number would have been even higher. And to me, it's these type of GPAs that redefines what it means to be a Witten Woods student athlete. Because they're students, and then they're athletes. And I have to kind of hats off to our superintendent. He pushed that, and we are seeing it happen. The National Honor Society first, and then, you know, actually attending this other event on Sunday. As I left these events, these students, I thought about the fact that these students are receiving a public education right here in Witten Woods City Schools. And I left these events with an expanded awareness of cultivating a new routine may initially seem awkward and challenging, but with continued effort and implementation, it can become our new norm. Stretching into what seems like uncertainty can then make that uncertainty stretch you. And that's what I kind of left feeling like, which causes then that elevation of the goals and the standards of excellence. I want to just thank the teachers. I always enjoy Mr. Lanier when he comes up. He's excited, and I get excited too because I'm an educator, and that's just contagious. You know that. But I want to thank the teachers and the coaches and the administrators and the teachers assistants and the community volunteers and the parents and the students, and the list goes on and on, and for all the people who have worked collaboratively to improve this school district. And this, it is this type of, say, collaboration that serves to improve the abilities of our students. And then, and only then, can this Warrior Nation that we want to celebrate have the best opportunity to create schools that provide the best possible education for all of our students. So I just wanted to get that out. It was burning inside of me. I had to write it down so that I wouldn't remember all of it. But again, I want to encourage the Witten Woods City School Community, that's Green Hill, Springfield Township, and Forest Park, to be the change that they want to see. Thank you. Go Warriors!
Thank you.
Very well said.
Very well said. Thank you. Ms. Miranda?
Well, there's really no following that. So I would just like to second the superintendent's notion earlier to thanking the Calendar Committee. I looked at that over, and that was fabulous. To me, legends and color coding and symbols and all that is great, so thank you. Also, I did want to mention that we attended the NHS induction, and I want to give a huge thanks to our administrators and our teachers who put that together, as well as all the students that were there. They all definitely earned their right to be there, and it was a wonderful, wonderful induction. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Penne cuff, anything from you?
Two things, Madam President. I too wanted to make note of the induction ceremony for the National Honor Society. It's a different flavor, though. What I learned that morning is that we have several more students who would qualify. It's not a limited number of students. It's not like you can only have five basketball players on the floor at once or eleven football players on the team, on the field at once. We could have an unnumber, unrestricted number of students who would meet the criteria of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. And learn to, my frustration, that we have some students whose grade point average would well put them in range, but they didn't bother to apply, or they underdid the work, you know, dashed it off and wasn't persuasive. So we clearly have some work to do in terms of helping students understand, not so much the value of being in the club, but the value that has as a line item on that resume or a line item on that letter of recommendation that they will be asking some of the people in this room to write as they approach their college application time or their scholarship application times. So yes, I was thrilled. It was nice to see quite a few students that I realized I knew their backgrounds, which is why I put together the little profile that, at your place, colleagues. So we've got some, some work to do, and I know the, while the superintendent and I haven't talked this specific point, I know he has a burning desire to make that ceremony an even bigger splash with the students in the audience, not just the students who are being honored, but so that the other students know that there is this to be achieved, and it's within their reach. That's one comment. The other comment, I'd just like to, at this time of year, wish our staff, our teachers and administrators and staff a very happy and restful holiday season. So thank you for your work this, this far this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cleary?
Madam President, there won't be much left to say. Everybody's, everybody's kind of, kind of said it. Probably at this point of the, of the week, just about everybody in Hamilton County, within our school district and the rest of the county, has received their audit letters from the Hamilton County Auditor showing that their home values have dropped roughly twenty percent. That will be affecting our levy campaign in two years. So hopefully, home values will come back up in the next two years. But I just wanted to make a comment that when we come back to the voters again for the, for the operating levy, it won't be the same operating levy. There'll probably have to be an increase. We really won't know what that increase is, but it's going to be probably another point, at least at, at this point in time. I wanted to thank the hundred-plus community members that have reached out to me in the last month on the bond issue. And I want them to know that the Board, we've had dialogue in that area, and And I want them to know that the Board, we've had dialogue in that area, and everybody is voting how they feel that, that they need to, how they need to, how they need to vote. But I wanted to thank those folks for, for reaching out from all three communities. And know that moving forward after, for me at least, moving forward after this point, I want to move forward with, with the same initiative that the rest of the Board's intention is, which is to work diligently to have new build, new buildings built regardless. I just kind of wanted to say that, that this, that will probably be my last no vote. The next vote will be in to affirm with the rest of the Board moving forward. That's it.
Thank you. I did want to make one, one, oh, let me go with Mr. Superintendent before I...
Thank you, Madam President, because I've just been burning.
I can, I can tell from here.
As a result of the lunch with the superintendent, the seniors have presented a proposal to Principal Martin where they want to volunteer and tutor students who may be having difficulties. So the senior class, they're taking on that challenge, so I'm excited. This was the second part. The first part was for me to meet them, and then the second part was for them to help us improve academically. And they have a great proposal that I will share at the next work session.
Excellent.
Very, very exciting.
Great.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
One of the things that I wanted to share just with the public, some of the things that you don't get to see, I think about three years ago, we began to institute work sessions. And so what you typically see on a regular night in front of Waycross are the votes, but there has been quite a bit of discussion and very long nights and multiple meetings and the like. So no one rubber stamps anything, to be clear. There's got a lot of discussion and, and soul searching and data mining and, and the like. So we wanted to make sure that everyone was clear that a lot of work goes into the votes that you see here on the regular meeting nights. Any other comments or concerns? Any comments from the Wenton Woods Teachers Association?
Somehow we thought so.
In the words of Stephen Covey, I wanted to encourage all of us here to sharpen the saw and take this time, this holiday season, to connect with others, reflect, and just share some quality time with friends and family. We deserve it. And as I always say, I'm very, always feel very fortunate to be around such hard-working teachers, students, and administrators. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from OEC? No one here? Any need Board for an executive session? I should hope not, but none? Hearing none? Meaning, sir, Merry Christmas.